The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. You have to contact Ken in the front row for listening devices. And we are going to start with a swearing-in ceremony for County Auditor Bob Litz. And Bob, are you going to go down front? And we're going to have Judge Hoffman is going to be here for that. And I know we were -- is Cindy back? Ran downstairs to get something quick.
She ran downstairs to get the Bible.
Yes.
And then here is the altar. You have to pack it in. All right. We're going to get the Bible, Bob. You know, I understand it's not.
There it comes.
Comes in and we got it.
Move the mic out so that they can.
Okay, are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right, usually we have like a third person hold the Bible. Not that that's obligatory either, but it's better for pictures.
Yeah.
All right. I, Robert Litz.
I, Robert Litz.
Who solemnly swear.
Who solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And that I will faithfully, and impartially discharge.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
All of the said duties.
All of the said duties.
Of my office.
My office.
Of Minnehaha County Auditor.
Of Minnehaha County Auditors.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Appreciate you.
Do we need to sign this here?
Here, Bob. I've got a license right here. Here's my official signing pen. It's a fountain, so I gotta get it just right. Oh, yeah.
The auditor's office runs on a March schedule instead of a January schedule like the commissioners do. And that's why the delay in the -- it isn't actually delayed. This is when he was supposed to be sworn in, is the first of March. So we will go on with routine business. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any corrections or additions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approval of the county commission meetings from February 24, 2015, and the joint meeting February 24, 2015. Is there a motion on both of those minutes?
Move for approval of both minutes.
Second.
Is there any corrections or additions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $545,763.07. Is there a motion?
Pay the bills.
A second and a second. Are there any questions or comments on bills? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports, and there are none. Personnel, Carrie Dever, motion to approve routine actions. Are there any questions for Carrie? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A motion for routine action, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is a special action to approve a 5% temporary additional pay raise for Carmen Kason, a juvenile detention officer at 7:10, for 12 to 15 months, beginning March 2, 2015. Carrie.
The action is pretty much a stated reason for the request is that this individual will be filling in for somebody who's on military leave. Jamie is here if you have any additional questions on the issue.
Are there any questions for Jamie? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
I have a motion, is there a second? Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is recognition of significant employee anniversaries for the month of March.
In February, I think we're a little thin and we're making up for it in March. So here we go. We have the following individuals celebrating five years of service with us. Clark Baker at the jail, John Trana at IT, Dean Hodgson at Human Services, Alex Anderson at the JDC, and Jason Doppenberg at the Treasurer's Office. Celebrating 10 years of service is Roger Bukler at the museum, Greg McNamara at the State's Attorney's Office, Jeff Thorson at the Sheriff's Office, Travis Krueger at the Air Guard, and John Seitz at the jail. Celebrating 15 years of service, we have Melissa Godberg, Diana Hummel, and Randy Negaard all at the museum, Jolynn Harris at the jail, Shannon Hemingway at Human Services, and Travis Rupferda at JDC. And to top it off, we've got Deb Dose in the auditor's office celebrating 30 years of service almost over. I don't believe that we have anybody in my machine, anybody in our large audience sitting.
We have a very impressive amount of people this month, which thank you for your service to Minnehaha County. Okay? And item number D is to record volunteers to the county departments for February.
And this list is actually down, but again, almost 200 volunteers, 187 in five areas of county. Can't do it without them.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thanks.
Item number six is applications for abatement. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item number A is first reading and authorized county auditor to publish notice of the hearing to consider rezoning number 15-03, to rezone from the A1 Agricultural District to the I1 Light Industrial District property. Legal description for this partial, A on Lot 1, Central Exchange, addition to the Town of Ellis, Section 10 Township 101 North, Range 50 West, located one and a half miles west of Sioux Falls in the unincorporated area of Ellis. Is there any questions? Otherwise, this is a reading and an authorization to publish notice. I guess we're going to have something. David. David's going to give us a little.
Just a brief overview. The applicant, Jeff Zacharias, Zacharias Construction Incorporated, submitted a request to rezone a parcel of land as you can see there on the map. This is a first reading. Staff request that a public hearing of March 24, 2015 be set. And this would be held at Carnegie Town Hall since this is within the joint jurisdiction with the city of Sioux Falls. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer any.
Any questions for David on this authorization? Look for a motion. Commissioner Kelly, did I have a motion?
Move to publish.
I have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize publication. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number B is to authorize county auditor to post notice of hearing to consider 2014 carryover supplements from the general fund to various general fund budgets in the amount of $513,193.08. The 2014 carryover supplements of $945,054.06 from the special revenue fund to various non-general fund budgets in the amount of $9,450,054.06 and a 2015 supplement for $17,700 from the general fund to the sheriff's budget. Darlene.
As you said, this is just a request to post notice of a hearing to be held on March 17. This is a routine action that we take every year for carryover supplements. And I have provided detail to you, so if you have questions on that. Otherwise, that is our request.
Okay. Are there any questions for Darlene on this notice to publish? I would look for a motion.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the auditor to publish. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is the planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. There are none. The next one is opportunity for public comment if there is someone here who would like to speak on an item that is not on today's agenda. Seeing none, we will move on to regular business. Item number 10, consider motion to concur with recommendations from the chairman to reappoint Carol Tweet to the Minnehaha County Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, Carol Tweet currently is serving out a term on the Minnehaha County Housing and Redevelopment Commission, and it's been recommended that she be reappointed to that position once again. And the chairman, Commissioner Heiburger, is recommended. But that does require a concurrence of the full board according to the documents establishing the Housing Commission.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ken? It's kind of hard to believe that five years have already gone by and that the safe home is up and running and doing very, very well.
Very well.
Is there a motion to?
I'll make that motion.
And a second to reappoint Carol Tweet as the Minnehaha County Housing and Redevelopment Commission Board. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Kyle Consulting Group LLC to conduct the Prison Rape Elimination Act, PRIA, compliance audit for the Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center. Jamie Grabb. Hi, Jamie.
Good morning. Originally, the governor had hoped that all institutions in the state of South Dakota would be pre-compliant by May of 2014. May 2014. He extended that to May 2015. We have our policy in place. We have begun the practices and we're ready to be audited. We have it set up to happen April 1 through the 3 if this is approved. And it came in under what we budgeted as far as the cost, so.
Are there any additional questions for Jamie? For a motion?
Would move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to authorize the chairman to sign consulting group for the Prison Rape Elimination Act. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Next, item number 12 is consider resolution to establish a processing fee to cover expenses related to the use of credit, debit, or other electronic forms of payments received by the sheriff's office. Jason Gierman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Any questions for Jason on this? Jason, did you want to give us a quick overview or?
Basically, we've been researching different credit card companies and found that the jail had already been using this company. And I contacted them and it was a pretty simple, easy way for us to start taking electronic payments with civil process, pistol permits, fingerprints, and you know, any other thing that might pop up in the future that we may decide to use the credit card system.
These fees are basically a reimbursement for what you are charged for using these forms of electronic.
Actually, it'll come out on the receipt of what the extra fee is. And then when it comes to our bank account, we won't see that. It goes directly to the credit card company. The other companies weren't able to do that. We had to process all the fees ourselves. So this is kind of much easier for us to deal with.
So this is no increased revenue for the sheriff's office?
No.
Is there a motion?
I'll make it, I guess.
I have a question?
If I may.
Okay.
You know, does our Treasurer's Office currently accept credit cards? I think that they.
I don't believe so.
I'm not sure that they do because of those fees.
I don't think so.
They don't?
Not over the counter.
But they do via computer transactions.
Okay, so.
Treasurer's Office receives them. You want to say that again? Sorry. They don't do it over the counter, but they do it online. They'll take credit cards online. Just since Ken doesn't have a microphone.
I guess my point is that maybe if that extra fee could be charged, it might be convenient for citizens to be able to pay that that way.
That would be up for the Treasurer's Office to make that decision, so. Commissioner Kelly.
Well, I think this is good for the public in all our departments. I've been fighting for this for many years, even when I was on the city council. But I think people are using debit cards, credit cards, and this just costs to doing business to some extent. But it also eliminates bad checks and things like that. So I'm glad we're expanding this and I guess people are willing to pay that fee for the convenience. I certainly would be, and I think most of us would be. So I'm glad to see it happen.
Clay County is currently using it, and I talked to the sheriff down there, and he was surprised and all the people that are willing to pay the. It's a $2 fee for anything $50 and under, and anything above $50, it's 4%. So we're not looking at taking large amounts of cash in with, you know, with the 4%, however the minor fees like a $35 civil process, a $10 pistol permit, things like that, will cost an additional $2.
Okay. Any other questions? No, I would look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 13 is a briefing and update on activities of the Minnehaha County for the 4-H Youth Development Program. Chuck Martineau.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Chuck.
I will let Nathan here introduce himself throughout with me. We have recently hired our part-time program advisor, so I'll let him talk a little about himself. Good morning. My name is Nathan Skatson, and as Chuck just said, I am the new part-time 4-H Youth Program Advisor here in Minnehaha County. Grew up in the northeastern part of the state, went to high school in Webster, went to the University of North Dakota in Grand Forks where I studied meteorology, but didn't quite follow that career path, have been working in youth development at summer camps here in South Dakota and in Oregon. And just, I'm excited to be here. Been working for about two weeks now. So just kind of getting the hang of things and look forward to serving the youth of Minnehaha County.
Thank you. Nice to meet you, Nathan. Welcome aboard.
Sorry, that scared us one away. Just kind of give you some updates about the 4-H program. The 4-H program, the mission of the programs, we bring extension programming to all the youth in Minnehaha County, not just the ones who are at 4-H clubs. When we are working on, once again, expanding our reach and our outcomes to the county, we are currently testing out a pilot program and after-school program and try and create 4-H clubs in those programs. We had a study in Milwaukee that came back that they did a similar program back in the early 2000s. They had tremendous growth in those areas and those partnerships really were very favorable. Kids were staying in those programs longer. Kids were learning more about the 4-H program, the extension program of Wisconsin, and they were really being more productive lifelong citizens, which is what we are hoping to produce here. Our numbers are looking to be up. We're looking to be about 550 for kids this year, which is last year we ended up being at 498. So we've added one new club, Latino club here with Pueblo Dios in Sioux Falls. There are about 50 to 60 members in that club. So they're all Spanish-speaking families from the area. So that's our pilot program. We meet with them. I meet with them a couple times a month, and we're working on expanding this to other low-income minority groups in Sioux Falls, too. We are once again involved in a lot of service projects in the county. This last winter, we collected for the Children's Inn. We adopted some families in need to help once again with their junior leaders program to show how giving back to those in need in the county are very important. We continue to visit nursing homes, provide assistance to other programs as needed. Currently, we work with 18 after-school programs in the county. 13 of them are in the city's limits of Sioux Falls, five are outside. We are in every after-school program that is outside of Sioux Falls that exists. We are also looking at expanding some of this to towns of Baltic and Colton and try to get into their, some sort of community hall center and do a workshop or day camp up there this coming summer. We work with kids about groups of 15 to 30 with these programs. So each program we go to averages around 80 kids. And we do a lot of our SDSU extension programs with it. Last fall, we had 1,500 youth go through a lot of 4-H programming in the county. That's out of 40,000 kids in the county, so we are not even close to reaching our goal. But this spring, with a lot of our partnerships and our events we're part of, we'll be close to 3,500. So we were really hit it hard this spring. And this summer, of course, we dedicate a lot of our summer to our 4-H program with our traditional clubs. Just want to bring you up to date, kind of know where things are with us. We are working hard, as hard as possible, and we will try to hang on to this one, so.
Are there any questions for Chuck? Okay. Again, Nathan, thank you. I'm glad you're here, and we hope that you enjoy us enough that you'll stay. Item number 14 is to consider a motion to issue the proclamation declaring March 17 and 18, 2015, as the Sioux Empire Water Festival days in Minnehaha County. Chuck Martineau.
One of our partnerships, as I spoke about, is we work with the Sioux Empire Water Festival. So they asked me to come forward today and speak to the county commission. Proclamation is, whereas the Big Sioux Ocafer underlies approximately 1,000 square miles and together with the Big Sioux River provides water to communities in southeastern South Dakota, and whereas providing 2,583 4th grade children from 115 classes in 50 southeastern South Dakota schools, with information about the protection and preservation of water, our most valuable resource will help children make educated decisions concerning water in the future. Whereas this education is accomplished with the help of 100-plus volunteers from federal, state, county, and city governments and from private businesses, and whereas this is the 22nd annual event, and whereas the county commission recognizes the long-term benefits of this type of education and supports such educational efforts. That is our proclamation.
Are there any questions on the proclamation? Because I would look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
I have a motion, is there a second? Second.
I'm sure I do have a comment, I guess.
Comment from Commissioner Barth.
You know, over the years, we've had quite a few water festival proclamations. And I've got to say, I've learned a lot about water from the presentations we've had over the years, to include the concept that the same water I'm drinking this morning, I think I had some water, you know, maybe went through a dinosaur 60 million years ago, et cetera. Those kids that have come to us in the past.
Drinking my water. Thanks a lot.
Those kids that have come to us in the past really brought up some things that I had never considered. And I think it's kind of a fun, fun thing.
Yeah. It's interesting to see that it's been 20 years, or 22 years, because my children were probably in one of those very first groups that went through that. And I helped with that a long, 20-some years ago, I did help with that. So very interesting it's been that long ago. So, thank you, Chuck. We have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 15 is to consider a motion to issue the annual St. Patrick's Day proclamation for Old Minnehaha County. Ken McFarland.
Well, Commissioners, it's that time of year again. And the organizers of the St. Patrick's Day Parade have asked that Minnehaha County issue its annual St. Patrick's Day proclamation, and that in that we have one of our county commissioners read the proclamation at the painting of the Shamrock at 11:45 a.m. at the intersections of 9th and Phillips this Saturday, March 14. And as I understand, Commissioner O'Kelly has graciously agreed to be the person to read the proclamation this year. And that we have attached this year's proclamation for Old Minnehaha County. If you'd like me to read it, I will, but I'm not going to do it in any kind of an accent.
If you'd agree with that, would be great.
St. Patrick's Day proclamation of Old Minnehaha County. A hundred thousand welcomes to you on this St. Patrick's Day. It's a day of celebration in Ireland and for our global Irish family throughout the world. Put on your Celtic face and join the flute's call, as the poet O'Shaughnessy said, "We are the music makers and we are the dreamers of dreams." May the legacy of St. Patrick long encourage us to treasure our strong community spirit and tradition of welcome and care for one another. Be it a chance to be of all the green, Irish in name and spirit, it is an Irish saying I leave you with to guide you on your way. May you be poor in misfortune, rich in blessings, slow to make enemies, and quick to make friends. But rich or poor, quick or slow, may you know nothing but happiness from this day forward. Wishing you God's blessings, and now let us shout and proclaim Happy St. Patrick's Day, dated this third day of the merry month of March 2015, signed by the Minnehaha County Commissioners all, Cindy O'Hueberger, Chairman, Gerald O'Benega, Vice Chairman, Jeff O'Barth, Gene O'Bender, and Dick O'Kelly.
Are there any questions for Ken? It is a week from Saturday, not this Saturday.
Correct.
The 14th, a week from Saturday. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And Commissioner Kelly has agreed to go read that proclamation on Saturday. Item number 16 is update and status report of the 90th legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaha County.
Commissioners, you know, session is starting to wind down here, and that then there's just a couple bills that we just wanted to point out. House Bill 1227, this was an interesting bill. This was an act to give counties the ability to impose a sales and use tax on sales that happened outside of the municipality but within the rural areas of the county. That actually passed out of committee on 10 to 4, or excuse me, 9 to 6, but it failed in the House on the floor, 32 to 37. When you couple this with the bill that we had about the property tax limitation, you know, about, this was the first year we even got the bill out of committee, and then unfortunately it was defeated on the floor, I think it is indicative of some of the headway and progress we're starting to make, I think, with our legislative delegation, that it is truly time to look at seriously helping counties with their finances and giving them some tools to meet the state mandated needs that we have. We've had a number of legislators who have made contact with, I know, with individual commissioners and with myself that have said, "Look, we want to sit down with you after session to get a better handle on things that are happening at county level and some of your needs." And that so if we did nothing this legislative session, I think we start to make some headway as far as the understanding and the education of some of the challenges that the counties face. You know, the one big bill that's still hanging out there that will really impact us funding-wise is the highway bill. And that, as you know, they defeated the House version of the highway bill, and everything is resting right now on Senate Bill 1, which was that version. There's still a lot of horse trading and dickering on what that final bill is going to look like. But if you're tracking the bills and want to know where we may end up with increased highway funding, Senate Bill 1 will be the bill that that will be attached to. Other than that, Commissioners, like I said, this year, while we didn't really gain a lot on some of the legislative items that were specifically passed at convention, you know, for consideration this year, things like our bill on the property tax limitation, there was a bill about counties being able to regulate fireworks. Really, none of the bills that were passed out of the association back in September of last year had a very good truck in the session this year. However, some of the other bills that other folks introduced that impacted us, we got a little more traction on, and I mentioned those earlier. So all in all, I think it's a session we can build on going into the future, and I think we need to take advantage of those offers from legislators to sit down with us after session and to get a better understanding of where our difficulties and challenges lie. So.
Thank you, Ken. Are there any questions for Ken? Commissioner Kelly.
Ken, what's the, was 1216, was that what? No, whatever. The tax one.
Yep, 1216.
What is the logic of, it's outside the municipalities only, so the sales within Sioux Falls?
You're talking, yeah. You're talking the sales tax bill. Yeah, as we looked at that bill, that was to be able to levy a sales and use tax for things that happened outside of municipalities within the rural areas.
What's the logic there when the municipalities are within our jurisdiction? We have all the expenses of those municipalities. Isn't it just they were trying to put together something that?
I think it was more of a foot-in-the-door kind of thing, you know, because counties have never received sales tax at all. And quite frankly, I mean, the municipalities have taken a position that that is their main source of revenue, and they're very protective of that source of revenue. And that so I think the prime sponsors on this bill, this was simply an attempt to get the counties' foot in the door as far as being able to collect the sales tax. And then the way they thought maybe they could get that to happen was to make it for sales for establishments that were in the county, in the rural areas of the county, but outside of the municipality, so you weren't going to be tapping on their base, their tax base.
This was not an association bill.
This was not. Although I think we were supportive of it. Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Barth?
Speaking on the same bill that Commissioner Kelly was talking about, you know, it did seem like there were a few legislators out there that, without any push from us, came up with ideas to help us, and I sure do appreciate that. I think there is the idea of the foot in the door, that the municipalities did not want us to ever collect a set of any kind of sales tax, and, you know, maybe they're right, but, you know, clearly, they are already swimming in money, and we are not. But there is, there is hope with some of our legislators, and I appreciate that.
Any other comments?
Well, just, you know, they, I think they tend to disagree that they're swimming in money. I think they have a resource there that gives them much more funds to meet their obligations than we have, and that I, sometimes words mean a lot, and I hate to say that, I would hate to agree that they're swimming in money.
Any other comments? Okay. Go on to item number 18, which is new business. Is there any new business? Did I forget? Item number 17 is liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, yesterday, we had a meeting of the Homeless Advisory Board over at the Bishop's House, which seems to be heavily used already with people that are not familiar to our county human services staff. So that's kind of interesting. However, we're coming up on the 10-year anniversary of the creation of the Homeless Advisory Board, which had the 10-year mission to end homelessness, which, of course, has not ended it, but we have made strides, and I think there's a plan to report to a joint session with the city about progress that's been made and suggest what things we'll do moving forward.
Any other liaison reports? I do have one. I sit on the Medical Catastrophic Fund Board, which is also our relief pool, and the annual invoice for this year, I just received that paperwork this week, was $22,481. Those payments are, to this fund, are computed based on South Dakota codified law. Carol Muller will probably talk to us about that in a couple of weeks, just to show us where we've been going. She's been keeping track for the last couple of years as far as the percentage that we're paying in, which is according to, like I said, the South Dakota codified law, how much we're paying in and how much we're getting back. Some years, it's been really good for us, other years, it hasn't been. She was going to average it out and see, you know, is this continued to be a benefit for Minnehaha County over what we're receiving from it? So I think we can look forward to report from Carol in the future regarding this fund, so. Are there any other liaison reports? Is there any new business? Any old business? I would look for a motion for adjournment and into executive session for personnel.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. I have a motion and a second for executive session and adjournment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.